Okay, we are at that magic time. I'd like to call the meeting of the Pompton Lakes Planning Board to order. The following is the agenda for the regular meeting of the Pompton Lakes Planning Board. The meeting is to be held in the municipal building, 25 Lenox Avenue on Tuesday, May 16th, 2023. We're beginning it at 7:30 PM. Formal written advance notice as required by NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 1 at SEC has been provided of this meeting at least 48 hours in advance of today, giving the time, date, and location, and, to the extent known to time, the agenda of this meeting. Such notice stated that formal action may or may not be taken. This meeting actually begins the new process of video recording as well as audio recording. So tonight will be both video and audio. The notice was posted on the bulletin board outside of the offices of the municipal clerk reserved for this and other similar announcements. Provided to the suburban trends, the newspaper designated by the council and planning board to receive such notices and filed with the borough clerk. Pledge of allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The court, will we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Simone?
Here.
Mr. Troz?
Here.
Mr. Drakkar?
Here.
Mr. Michael?
Here.
Mr. Otto?
Here.
Dr. Penexer?
Excuse?
Mr. Keating?
Here.
Mr. Edgar?
Yeah.
Mr. Baalby?
Here.
Mayor Sarah?
Here.
And Councilman Bennett?
Here.
Thank you. We do, in fact, have a court. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the regular meeting minutes of March 21, 2023. For all those who were present for that, can I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
Mr. Fekara?
Second.
Mr. Keating. Then you have discussions or questions or comments on the meeting minutes. If not, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Simone?
Yes.
Mr. Troz?
Yes.
Mr. Fekara?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Keating?
Yes.
Mr. Edgar?
Yes.
Mr. Baalby?
Abstained.
Mayor Sarah?
Yes.
And Councilman Bennett?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda is correspondence. We have four pieces of correspondence, all from the borough of Bloomingdale regarding zoning, their Chapter 92, involving schedule of regulations, definitions, and then there's an, looks like an update to the schedule of regulations and definitions again. There's really nothing we need to do, except we acknowledge that we received them, and so we consequently move on to applications. And the first application tonight is PB 23 dash 01, Stephen T. DePaul, Grant Avenue, Pompton Lakes, New Jersey, block number 3203, lot 30, and the zone is R4.
Who do you think is the chairman?
Welcome.
Members of the board. My name is David Altman. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. In all honesty, I was expecting you to go through some ordinances before you reached us, but I'm delighted that you've reached us this early. We're here tonight on a subdivision application, and I am going to present Christopher Nussar as both an engineer and as a planner. So with the board's pleasure, I'm going to ask that Mr. Nussar be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last.
Christopher Nussar, N-U-S-S-E-R.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Mr. Chairman, you mind if I sit?
Absolutely not, please do, and we just let's qualify him, Mr. Nussar.
I was just about to. Mr. Nussar, by whom are you employed and in what capacity?
I am employed by engineering and land and associates in a consulting capacity.
And would you provide the board with your educational and experience and work experience?
Absolutely. I graduated from Rutgers University in 2006 with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. I am a licensed professional engineer and planner in the state of New Jersey. Those licenses are in good standing. I've been practicing land use engineering since I was in college, and certainly since over these past many years, I have appeared before and testified in the capacity as a licensed professional in front of over 70 boards in the state of New Jersey that was never the pleasure here.
Okay. What year were you first, where you became a professional engineer?
Wonderful question. I honestly do not remember. I would say 2009 or 2010.
Okay. That's fine.
And just to be clear, you've qualified as an expert in the field of engineering?
Yes, engineering.
And I, thank you, just beat me to it. And just so the record's clear, you've qualified as an expert, a planner, among other boards in the state of New Jersey.
Yes, I have.
Okay, thank you.
We're accepting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Nussar, perhaps you can walk the board through the application?
Absolutely. I know we're doing video, so I don't know where...
Yeah, we can put the...
Right behind.
Court, did you get any kind of electronic files?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have the ability to project electric files, the com files?
No.
Okay.
I do not know this was sent out to me on the call, so I... This is the applicant and their team, so I don't feel so bad blocking them with the board. So I have two boards here. One is just the submitted plan set that is in front of the board, dated February 9th of this year. Do you overlay mark for identification?
Okay.
This is the final plan set, unmodified. Do you mark this?
Unmodified, no.
Just prefer, when you speak about it, refer to what sheet you're talking about. Absolutely. And then we also have here a, here's the pencil, but, a plan titled DePaul Pompton Lakes Exhibit. It is a...
Can I interrupt you again, just a minute? I'm sorry. Can everyone hear him?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. And I'm going to suggest if you put that board over here by the table, sorry, ladies, but I'd rather that we and the audience get to see as much as they can.
I want to stand right here. I think that'd be kind of right.
Yeah, Mr. Keating, can I sit?
I'm good.
You're like having some car.
That's okay.
Okay, so this, which I will mark as A1 with today's date, which is 70?
16.
Is, again, an aerial photograph or of the, of the site in the area with the surrounding lot lines in this gray color, the proposed lot lines in a blue color, and then the proposed homes and dwellings that are shown in the plan highlighted on here as well. So we're going to start on sheet four of, what plan is that? So the subject property, as was mentioned earlier, is a 32,042 square foot lot. It is a parallelogram shape, and it runs on Grant Avenue. It's currently developed with a single-family home, a garage, and some other apartment structures. Those, all those structures would be removed as part of this proposal, and what we are proposing, as shown here on sheet four, is a four, sorry, I want to get sheet four, a three-lot subdivision of this subject property. We'll have three equal-sized lots. They will each have 64.81 feet of frontage, and it'll be 9,506 square feet in size. It'll be 164.79 feet deep, and will maintain the parallelogram shape that the existing lot has. As far as this application goes, in compliance with your zoning standards, that lot area and the lot width both require relief. The standard is 15,000 square feet, and the lot width requirement is 75 feet. And again, we're 57.68 feet and 9,506 square feet in lot area. Otherwise, the development is proposed to meet all of the other standards as far as setbacks and lot coverage.
Can I ask one quick question while you're presenting?
Yes, please.
32,000 in total site?
Yes, sir.
9,503 lots each?
That's correct, sir.
Doesn't add up?
Doesn't add up.
It should be like 10,500 or something, or 28, whatever.
That only adds up to like 28,500.
Which one is correct, the individual lot size or the total lot area?
The total lot area. The total lot area is the correct lot area. Individual lots, right, would be larger than that. So individually, they would be that 10...
They're going to be over 10,000 each, obviously.
Yes. Would be 10,680.
10,680?
10,680.
All right, and what does that do to the zoning table that's on your drawings?
So relief is still required. Obviously, the closer to conformant, at 10,000 to 28,000, or the 15,000 is required, but we are, we are closer to...
But you're still under, so you still need the variance.
We still need variance, yes.
I just wanted to get the numbers correct.
Yes, I appreciate that, and I apologize to the board for that. So the, the A1 here, as looking at it, you can see as it shows on sheet five of the plan, you can see the three proposed home locations and the proposed driveways. Again, the homes are, as you can see from the aerial photograph...
I have to interrupt you once again, I'm sorry. So your zoning table, which is what I just asked you about?
Yes, sir.
According to that, the existing lot is 488. So which of the three, which of the three scenarios is it? Is it the 28 divided by 3, or the 32 divided by 3? Do you have the actual plat size?
69,506, 323.
Do you have the deed by any chance?
I don't have the deed on me, but, you know, off of the area, if you calculate the area off of, just, I mean, it is a parallelogram, but it is generally square, or, you know, everything is equal. The 32 is the correct number.
All right.
I actually have, I think I have the...
Mr. Altman, I'd like to resolve that before we go any further.
Understood. I think I do have the deed with me.
Yeah, but...
It's not a square because the lines are on an angle.
Right, it's not a square, it's a parallelogram, but what I meant to say was, it is a parallelogram.
The distance between the two parallel lines, though, is not 164 feet.
So let's start off with the square, the side of the square feet of the lot.
This is probably the right number. It's 2840. Somebody calculated that. The table is correct.
Is correct?
The table is correct. It's 28,488 square feet. So the 32 is the incorrect number, 32042.
All right, now I need to know that that's a factual, I don't want to go further until we can confirm that response.
I just calculated the area myself, and the 28,488 is the correct number.
What is, what is the distance from the curb line to the back lot on a 90-degree angle?
Oh, this. Yeah, it's, um, 140, yeah, short of 147. You know, a perfect 90°.
Okay, so you're stating as fact that the square footage of the lot is what is shown on the table on drawing number four?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a lot that's 28,488 square feet?
Correct.
Now, are you also affirming that the setbacks that you're proposing, that the 30-yard, 30-yard, or 30 feet, 30 feet, 30 feet, and 40, 40, and 40, and then the side yards are all, in fact, intact as shown on the plan?
Yes.
So there's no, there's no more deviation or anything other than that total square footage?
Correct.
Okay.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
But the measurements on the lot width, you've got 194.44 across all three lots, and the oblique line, where you've measured your calculation, is 164.79, and that adds up to 32,041, 41, 42. So something on your plan is not correct.
Now, the distance, the distance from the street to the back of the yard in a straight line, you just measured that 147.
Yeah, but then you'd have two triangles left on each, on each side.
No, you don't. You cut this triangle off and put it on the other side, and now you got a square.
Right. So you measure from the height of it times the width, and assume that this piece fills in over here. So you end up making that wide by that deep.
And that...
That's why we're measuring this by this.
So your 32,042 is your mistake in measuring the oblique line?
Correct.
Right.
Okay, we also have said that we have the area of the lot stated incorrectly, and I'll correct that on the record.
Yeah.
Mr. Altman, can you continue?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Nussar, in assessing this, did you have an opportunity to look at the neighboring properties?
Yes, I did.
Can you describe that for the board, what your findings were?
So this, which, this, which we'll mark as A2, is a grown-up version of the tax map of the area with some indications to it as to the surrounding uses around the property. The property being highlighted in green here along Grant Avenue and to the rear of the property, you can see in this pink color, there are a number of two-family residences. There are three single-family residences in the yellow. There is a four-family residence located on the lot across the street, and there is a 20-unit townhouse condo development located to the north of the site. As you can see, surrounding even beyond that, the lots to the south and just otherwise within the area here, you have lots that are all 50, 60 feet wide. All these lots here on Roman, as I'm indicated, just south of Broadway, are 50 feet in width. The lots to the south of the subject property on Beam are 50 feet with 60-foot line lots across the street.
How deep are those lots, sir?
Yes.
How deep are those lots?
So these lots are 175 feet deep. So they are less in area than what is proposed. These lots are 60 by 166 feet. So again, fairly consistent in area with what we are proposing for the subject property for this project. You can see that the homes immediately adjacent going down Grant Avenue, whether it be one or two family, these three lots here are all in the same range of width as what is proposed.
So the engineer, the board engineer posed the question as to why we were seeking to divide a lot into three as opposed to two, which would not require variance relief.
It would, based on...
Could you respond to that question, please?
Yeah, I think that's kind of the crux of, crux of the application before you this evening. Obviously, yes, we could turn this into two lots instead of three. They would be conforming to the zoning ordinance. Now, as, as I look at this from a planning perspective, and I look at what the surrounding uses are, and I look how, I look how the neighborhood has been developed. What we're proposing is consistent with how these homes have been developed surrounding the property. If we did larger lots, larger lots would mean larger houses. As we saw on A1, if you look at the scale of the proposed home to the scale of the homes adjacent along Grant Avenue, across the street, and even on Beam, what you'll see is that those homes are very consistent in size to the homes that were developed in those locations. And so it's, it is my opinion that the relief that is being sought is, is actually appropriate in this case because of that. Because what we're doing is we're maintaining the density and the development pattern and the way that this area has been developed through the years. Again, it's, if we go back to A2, get my steps in place. If we go back to A2, and you see how, from a use perspective, how this, how the street has been built, you have a number of two-family homes that are already on the street, you have four-family homes have, you have townhomes located at the end of the street. So here, if we're, again, going with larger lots in this place, on this property, if we're going with larger lots with larger homes, it's not as consistent with what's proposed before you. I think, again, if we're looking at this from a variance perspective, we're looking at, we're looking at a C2 variance. Obviously, there's not a hardship in here. We're looking at benefits versus the detriments here. Again, I think the purposes of zoning that we are advancing is, are that we are promoting a desirable visual environment. The home that's on this property now is in a state of disrepair, and we would be removing that home and replacing it with newer housing stock that isn't really otherwise available in the community. There'll be new attractive dwellings in this location. Again, having them be consistent in nature with the other homes on the street and in the area, I think also helps promote that desirable visual environment, that you don't have two larger homes on a street with otherwise smaller houses. So again, that consistency, I think, lends to, lends to that nature.
Can you, can you speak to the proposed square footage of the individual homes if the subdivision approval is granted?
So the homes have a 1,500 square foot footprint, as depicted on the plan. So obviously, there's a garage within them, attracts a little bit from the floor area, two stories, so then you're adding back. So you're looking at how does that have, you know, around the 2,500 square foot gross floor area to them?
Mr. Chairman, I, we have prepared a rendering of what the client, from an aspirational perspective, hopes to be able to build. I don't know necessarily that you'd want to hear testimony from Mr. Nussar about that.
Architect.
I'm sorry?
The architect.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have an architect here tonight because we're here on a subdivision application and not on site plan approval. So, but I, I think it, it would be beneficial if we could show the board the rendering of what it is that is hoped for to be built if subdivision and site plan approval is granted. I'd like to show you that, that rendering.
Well, you just asked for subdivision and site plan approval.
We're here tonight on subdivision approval.
But you just, you just said to get subdivision and site plan approval, so are you here for only subdivision or subdivision and site plan?
Tonight, we're here, unfortunately, only for subdivision approval.
Okay, and then the site plan comes later on?
It does.
And so who drafted the photographs or the renderings?
I believe that was our architect. Architect put it on CAD and a rendering company.
He got, he has to, he's warranted for your testimony.
Yeah, I don't know if we can't, we, can we even take testimony on the proposed rendering if the person who prepared it is not here to...
Boards are not bound by the evidence. They typically follow the law. So it is the board's discretion of whether or not it wants to appear and what way to give. Typically, this board, in my recollection, is like the person that I... that isn't really otherwise available in the community. There'll be new attractive dwellings in this location. Again, having them be consistent in nature with the other homes on the street and in the area, I think also helps promote that desirable visual environment that you don't have two larger homes on a street with otherwise smaller houses. So again, that consistency, I think, lends to- lends to that nature.
Can you speak to the proposed square footage of the individual homes if the subdivision approval is granted?
So the homes have a 1,500-square-foot footprint, as depicted on the plan. So obviously, there's a garage within them, attracts a little bit from the floor area, two stories, so then you're adding back. So you're looking at how does that have, you know, around the 2,500-square-foot gross floor area to them.
Mr. Chairman, I- we have prepared a rendering of what the client, from an aspirational perspective, hopes to be able to build. I don't know necessarily that you'd want to hear testimony from Mr. Nussor about that.
Architect.
I'm sorry?
The architect.
Yeah, we don't have an architect here tonight because we're here on a subdivision application and not on site plan approval. So, but I think it would be beneficial if we could show the board the rendering of what it is that is hoped for to be built if subdivision and site plan approval was granted. I'd like to show you that, that rendering.
Oh, you just asked for subdivision and site plan approval?
We're here tonight on subdivision approval.
But you just said to get subdivision and site plan approval. So are you here for only subdivision or subdivision and site plan?
Tonight, we're here unfortunately only for subdivision approval.
Okay, and then the site plan comes later on?
It does.
And so who drafted the photographs or the renderings?
I believe that was our architect. Architect put it on CAD and a rendering company.
He has to be sworn in for your testimony.
Yeah, I don't know if we can't we- can we even take testimony on the proposed rendering if the person who prepared it is not here to-
Boards are not bound by the evidence. They typically follow the law. So it is the board's discretion of whether or not it wants to hear and what way to give. Typically, this board, in my recollection, is like the person that I've needed to document for creating a subdivision.
Well, I don't know how the board feels about it, but typically, I would expect that you ask for what you want and prepare your exhibits and present your professionals in accordance with that. So unless the board has other ideas, that would be my recommendation.
Understood.
And consequently, the drawings, I don't know. Does the board want to see them or do they want to just stick with what the site plan does at a later point when it goes to the building department? Because, you know, we don't get to deal with that. If it's as a subdivision-only-
If, what am I inputting?
Yes, sir, always.
If they are asking for a variance, the- some of the offset, why you might want to grant a variance, is what the appearance would be, aesthetics. And so if they are looking for certain variances, you can require them to. That's why sometimes you have shielding, you have fencing, or you have landscaping or other stuff. I'm not saying that's appropriate here, but seeing visually what something is going to look like, if it's going to be smaller than the municipal wants it, it would be in your purview. Going back, then that depends upon the person that created it, whether they should be there. That's visually why you might want to see it because that would-
Well, to be fair to the applicant, my concern is they're asking for a three-home subdivision, which is constrained by the zoning as to require the variance. If it was a two-home subdivision, the variance for lot width, I think, was-
No, it would still require a variance because you'd have to do 14,000 square foot lots.
Lot area, right.
Yeah, it'd be 14 instead of the 15 that's required. And so you're asking basically us to approve something that is an intense, more intense use than we would ordinarily see. And I don't know if I would be- I don't know if I would be comfortable looking at the sighting of the house and the appearance of the house without having it presented formally. So, but I'm not- I'm only one person here, so I'd like to hear from you all how you feel about that and whether or not, I mean-
Chairman, I've got just a question on what you're asking. If we do see it, no one can answer any questions on it because the person is not here to answer those questions. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I mean, the fact that you show it to us, I mean, if somebody holds it up and say, "Look, here it is", that's not a problem. The problem is then how we-
To consider it.
You're asking us to consider that as a reason to approve it, correct?
Or not?
I'm asking you to view it to get a sense of what it is that the applicant hopes to be able to construct if they're granted subdivision and site plan approval.
As an inducement to approve what you propose.
True, in fairness, yes.
Yes, so in that case, I have no problem with what the mayor said. If you want to show it, we can't really talk about it. And other than that, then the board's going to have to decide whether there's sufficient information.
I think what I'll do is, when Mr. Nussor's testimony has concluded, I'll ask the applicant to just say a few words about it. He's familiar with the property, he's familiar with the rendering, if that's acceptable.
Well, it may or may not be. That depends on how the board chooses to hear it. I'm just speaking as the chairman, but, you know, the board's vote, it's not just my vote.
I understand, I understand.
So if you want to present it visually, simply as a, "This is what it looks like", let the public see it, let us see it, it's fine. Other than that, we can't really comment or question it because we have no way to do that.
Understood. Okay. Mr. Nussor, we were just speaking about the area and the size of the lots that neighbor this subject site. If the lot were cut into two, would those two lots be consistent with the neighborhood, based upon your analysis?
They'd be significantly larger than the other homes, the other lots within the neighborhood. Again, most of the lots, if you look at those lots, 50 by 175, or 60 by 166, you know, most of these lots are consistent with the, you know, 8,000 to 9,000 square foot range where we're proposing 9,500 square foot lots.
And in terms of the width of the lots?
So again, looking at the surrounding development and the surrounding development pattern, most of those lots are also substandard in their existing condition where they're 50 or 60-foot wide lots where the lots that are proposed are, again, consistent with that. So if we did two lots, it would be, you know, it would be much larger than what is currently existing.
Is it your testimony that the proposal will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance?
Yes, and to the chairman's point about this being a more intense development of this than the zoning ordinance otherwise permits, again, it's- I think, in my opinion, it's a fairly consistent density with what is surrounding this property. Not only is it consistent on the lot sizes for the majority of the lots surrounding it, but as we discussed earlier, the lots surrounding it also, we have a number of two-family homes. We have four-family homes, and we have condos. So we have higher-density housing that exists along the street to begin with. So from a density perspective, we're not introducing an increase in density. We're kind of, we're working with the density that already exists on this street.
I have another question. Can you go to that tax map and read off, except for the townhouse property? Read out, you know, sequentially, the square footage of each lot that you show in pink and then the yellow and the blue one?
Well, unfortunately, the tax map doesn't have the lot sizes on them. But-
You have your calculator.
I'm going to pull tax records as we're talking here and take the lot sizes from there. So this is giving it to in acres, and we are .22 acres is what we are proposing for each lot, .22 acres.
.22, okay.
So lot 25 here at the end of Grant Avenue is .32. Lot 27 is .18. Lot 28 is .16. Lot 29 is .19.
Which one is that one?
Lot 29, which is immediately adjacent. Lot 33, which is the two-family on the other side, is .28. This one locked, but it is not sequential to anything. Lot 37. Lot 37 here is .13. Lot 38 on the corner is .15. Going to lot 12 at the other, back to the end of Grant, that is .18 acres. Lot 10, which has the four-family on it, is .34. Lot 9 with the single-family house is .85. Lot 8, .01, is .19. And lot 8 is .23. So that's Grant lots on Grant Avenue. So at .22, we're larger than almost all, certainly all the single families with the exception of lot 9, which again is a larger lot.
Okay, continue. Just wanted to get the numbers on the record.
I think that really sums up where and what our case is. It's my opinion, again, that this is the appropriate way to develop this lot. It is consistent with the neighborhood. There's no negative impact. The homes are otherwise developed in accordance with the zoning ordinance as far as all the bulk standards. The homes will be appropriate in size. We're not trying to overbuild the lot. We're trying to build consistent with the community. I think at the end of the day, this is a nice addition to the overall community to have this new housing stock available that really isn't in the borough.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Stephen DePaul to step up. If we can have him sworn in, please.
Please raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last.
Stephen T. DePaul, D-E-C-A-L-P-A-U-L.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
And you said-
Thank you.
Mr. Paul, would you- you're the applicant?
I'm the applicant.
Okay, would you describe for the board what it is that you'd like to be able to do here?
I'd like to thank the board for hearing me. I'm also a licensed builder in the state of New Jersey. I have been in the construction field my whole life, been building homes for about 30 years now. My goal here was to improve the neighborhood. The house that I had purchased on this lot is in- it's ready to collapse, basically. It's in disrepair. I thought it would be best to go to the planning board to see if I can get a three-lot subdivision, to improve the neighborhood, get the houses onto the tax rolls, help the community, and basically bring out my idea of what a beautiful home would look like for others in the area.
And did you engage the services of an architect to assist you?
We did, yes.
And you did ask the architect to prepare a rendering?
Yes, I asked the architect to prepare the rendering, and his company doesn't really do the renderings, but he gave the CAD drawings to a renderer for us.
The CAD drawings you're referring to are CAD drawings of what you would propose to build on each subdivided lot?
Yes, and they are CAD drawing of the actual architectural drawings.
And you have that rendering here tonight?
We do.
Since I have a pen, I'll mark it as A3.
No, we don't have this, so yeah, we need that.
Yeah, if this is not going to be an evidence that you don't have the prepare of it-
Typically, it wouldn't go in.
Right, it's not going to go in.
You can refer to it.
Just for identification purposes, let's refer to it as A3, if that's acceptable.
A3 for ID?
Mr. Paul, have you seen A3 in form?
I have.
Okay, and can you tell the board what that is?
It is a three-bedroom, 2,500-square-foot home. The first floor, it will be a three-fold bath home. It will have a full basement. The area there is high and dry. There's no high-water tables or anything like that. We have investigated that. The first floor is an open floor plan, kitchen, living room, all accessible, and the full bath. There is a garage entry into the house from the garage. The second floor will be where all the bedrooms are and owner's suite with two-fold baths on the second floor.
Is the landscaping that's shown in the rendering consistent with what you had hoped to be able to do?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I don't have any other questions. We're on the, certainly, members of the board have questions.
Well, first thing I'd like to do is ask our engineer for comments regarding the letter that was sent and any responses that you might have to that.
Well, is she going to respond to the applicant or to the professional?
No, are you done with Mr. DePaul?
Yes, yes.
I do have a question for Mr. DePaul.
Okay, sorry.
You intend on building all of these. You're not going to sell one property off. You know, if somebody comes in after the subdivision, you know, say we grant the subdivision, and somebody says, "I want to buy that centerpiece of property", are you going to sell that centerpiece of property?
Absolutely not. It wouldn't be financially tenable to do that.
Because, okay, looking at page five on the drawings, you know, the houses are at an angle to the street. They're not perpendicular to the street. I'm just looking at a two-lot subdivision, gives you the ability to turn those houses, keep them within the envelope, you know, so that they would actually face the street and not be at an angle, so.
Mr. DePaul, if I may?
Yeah?
All the houses on that street are on that angle. Not- most everyone towards their railroad tracks are on that angle, and that's why we propose to keep them symmetrical to the left of those. And the, I believe it's a two-family to the right of the lot. That one also is on- the house is straight, but the property is on an angle.
Anything else, Mr. DePaul? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So-
Ms. Russell?
Bring Mr. Nussor back to answer the questions of the engineer.
Can you address the letter that your firm sent as it reflects on what the testimony was tonight?
Sure. As a quick point of clarification, I'm a planner, though I'm not an engineer. But I, yeah, certainly, the application before you tonight is for a three-lot subdivision of an existing 28,480 square foot lot, creating three new undersized lots, each of which requires a variance for lot area and each of which requires a variance for lot width. As has been testified to tonight, this could be subdivided into two lots. They would still re- each degree would still require a lot area variance, though the- sorry, even the two in that scenario would require a lot area variance, but you would have made a lot width variance. The applicant or the planner on behalf of the applicant needs to provide testimony which indicates the purpose of the zoning would be advanced by the proposal, that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and that the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. If you feel that that has been presented to you tonight, you can take that testimony and weigh the evidence that's presented to you accordingly. With regard to the rendering that has been proposed tonight, I would just reiterate a level of caution because the board is not approving site plan. That's really, while I am not suggesting that the rendering is misleading or intended to be misleading, the subdivision approval will not be linked to the pretty picture that we all saw tonight and something different to be submitted for punishment. Again, I'm not suggesting that's the intent, but I don't want you to have the false understanding that if you were to approve this, that they are bound to what you saw tonight.
Unless they agree to something.
Fair enough. But I'm happy to take more specific questions if you had anything on your mind.
Anyone from the board have any questions for our-
Question, this is the technical, once I get the numbers right. Just going to, so the minimum lot frontage previously, existing, is 195.34 and which divided in three will equal 64.8164. You just divided that by three. The existing lot width is 145. That was not divided in three. That's all 57, which doesn't add up to the 145, and I'm not sure why. Maybe it's how it's defined, but-
I think it is how it's defined.
Andy, I think it might, rather than being minimum lot width, it's actually minimum lot depth. If you read it as depth, it would make more sense. So it's the distance that we were referred to. So it's the distance that we were referred to earlier, the distance from Grant Avenue back towards the rear boundary of the property.
I understand, but the frontage lot width, so I'm not sure.
They are, but I think that's a mistake.
Where is the -- and that's completely fine. Why does it change? Where's the 57 feet?
Andy, that's the angle of the property line. It's a direction. It's 57 degrees.
Which one are you looking at, this number here? Look at it on here. It's easier to see.
No, it's the table.
It's 57 degrees.
South 57.
No, no, no. Look at the chart, the zoning chart. It's on page four. Probably a simple one for this. Minimum lot width here.
Should be 75, right?
75. Previous one is 145.
Okay.
And it was acting a lot. And then they divide it in three, 57, 57. That doesn't add up to 145.
No, it doesn't.
And I don't -- so I don't exactly know where that -- those three numbers come from. That's all I'm asking.
You're correct. That 57, three times, is going to be --
173.04.
Yeah, and you've got 145, 54.
All I wanted to do was get that up.
Absolutely.
I think we've got to have better numbers.
I'm becoming inclined to suggest that you come back with corrected and accurate drawings before we get into an issue about whether numbers are right or wrong.
Mr. Chairman, if you can indulge my engineer just for a moment, I think he's trying to get to the bottom of it.
Wouldn't I need a sealed set of plans?
This will be the third time that we have to make corrections. It becomes difficult to really judge what should be done when the numbers don't add up, and the most serious one was the first one. But they all have a bearing on what we provide in the way of testimony for public and then for our deliberation.
I understand.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting, since we're having a discussion with all these measurements, how does it sit now and they tell us that this is correct?
Well, it's testimony. So if it turns out that it's wrong, then they have to come back here, and I'm trying to avoid a mistake because we know from other applications when things are not presented correctly, and then they find out at a later time, then it becomes an issue because it's a building problem then. So if they testify to it, we could accept it, but I would, my own opinion, and again, I'm going to ask the board how they feel. I'm sorry?
I'd feel better if I saw it on paper.
I'm having a little issue with these numbers, and I'm not quite content to just accept.
And I frankly don't want you to. Mr. Chairman, would you and the board be amenable to a special meeting where the applicant would pay for the professional's time to attend a special meeting, to hear the application once the plan has been checked and double-checked and corrected?
It just depends on when you ask because it just depends on how many people I get for the board. We can do that, but we have to then find out how many people are -- so if I don't have a quorum, we can't do it.
And if the room is available.
And if the room is available. So you would have to tell us, the options, I believe, Andy, would be either A, you have to pull this and come back again.
Right.
Or continue it. And then the other option would be to have a special meeting, and then you could try for the special meeting, but then you can always slip to the next meeting as a backup.
Right.
And depending on who you -- what date you pick and whether you'll have to check with Liz to make sure that the room's available or clerk.
Yep.
And then, once that's confirmed, then we have to get a toll of who can make it.
Right. The -- yeah. This doesn't help what you just discussed, but if the board was able to commit to a special meeting tonight, no notice would be necessary because it would be continued to that special meeting. That may not be possible, so it's not possible.
No, I don't think it can be.
I understand.
Right. So then you have a notice requirement of, if you even decided tomorrow that you were ready, you still have to have the 10 days' notice.
Right.
And renotice each by each person.
Yeah, understood. That's a good question. When is the next meeting? I'm assuming it's a month from now?
Yes, it'd be the third Tuesday.
Third Tuesday. So if -- well, I guess we're going to have to go back and adjust the plans. I don't want you to render a decision on plans that are not verifiable. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to have the opportunity to request a special meeting, understanding that we may have to renotice and you'd have to poll the board to see whether or not everyone's available, and we'll certainly find out about the room. But I'm not going to ask you and the board to vote on an application that's not -- that we can't verify for you. I fully appreciate the conundrum.
That's my opinion of what it should be, and, you know, the board can safely express their opinion, but if you're agreeable to that, I think that would be best.
And I am agreeable to that. That's what I'd like to do.
Okay. So what formal terminology do we need?
Currently, this meeting is being carried to the next -- it should be carried to the June meeting, hearing, and no further notice before. Yes, there's going to be a special meeting, they'll have to do it.
Right. Okay.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. I apologize that our ducks are not all in a row.
The date would be June 20th?
June 20th.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
That's the gentleman to clear out.
Yeah, and marking it.
They should all be the same. They should be, if depth is correct and we do math, adds a --
Good night, gentlemen.
Yeah, it says width. Good night, depth. They should have put depth, and the depth is 140, so they should all be 140. Some of it's divided by three, and you don't divide the depth by three because they're all the same depth. It should all be a little bit.
Okay, is Mr. Diaz here? Okay, we have a conceptual plan. George Diaz, 241 Wannecue Avenue, Pompton Lakes, New Jersey, block 6300, lot 31, Zone DBD-1, for a virtual archery simulator. You come on up, a conceptual plan so everyone knows. It is nothing binding on anybody. This is just saying, what do you think of what's going on? If I want to do this, do I have any problems with things that we would be concerned about? So you're really here just to kind of give us a heads up. Nobody needs to be sworn in for an equal. It's conceptual. So we're just going to ask you to say what you need to say in support of what you'd like to do. Tell us what an archery simulator is and what you propose to do.
My name is George Diaz. So 241 Wannecue Ave is building for sale. We're currently under attorney review, but before I really proceed, I want to see if this business is acceptable. Right now, there's two units there. First unit, we --
Can you step outside for the conversation, please? Can you step outside for the conversations, please? Thank you.
So the first unit, the bigger one, which was the old video game store, we sort of want to do like it's an archery virtual simulator. It's almost like virtual bow. It's a huge screen that's 10 by 10, and then you come with your own bow, and then the tips are, what is it? Blunt tips. So there's no arrows, it's just basically flat. So you have your bow, and then an animal comes out, shoot, it's all different games. It's like small game, big game, there's tic-tacs, those. You can run leagues with it, you basically do a lot with the machine. So that's basically one of the businesses I want to do in that bigger unit. And in the smaller unit, my wife likes to do a soap and crystal shop, basically homemade soaps and just crystals and for the little store. But basically, it looks like this. It's just a --
Just come closer so we can all take a quick look.
So it's basically like that, it's all enclosed, it's like a --
And just be careful walking there.
So it's all secure, it's all safe, nobody could really just hit anybody in the public, so it's just basically an area all enclosed. Shoot, and that's a screen.
You're just going to have one screen in there?
Just one screen, that's it, and the rest of the area will just be like a lounge.
I ask you a question. I've been involved down all the time. That building has been unoccupied for very long.
Yeah, I think so.
That is the problem I was having now with my lawyers because the next door building is a drive through, and it is condemned from my understanding. So we're in a process of trying to figure out all of that, and I also believe that I could build apartment rooms above the building so that something made of that's extremely towards this building, that it has a lot of potential.
All right, so let me give the board just a little knowledge on what he's talking about. The EPA came in and is taking over the cleaning of the cleaners that used to be next door there.
Right.
They have removed all the asbestos and things that were causing issue down there. I'm trying to work out a deal with them right now to see if they'll take the building down, and that's where we want to put a pocket park.
The Roth cleaners building?
All the Roth cleaners.
And only that building?
Only that.
And this is immediately next to that or two down?
It's two.
It's basically two units immediately next to, yeah.
So you're looking to take two units.
Well, that's what I'm purchasing, yeah, the two units.
But those two units, the one unit actually touches the Roth cleaner, correct?
They sort of both touch. Yeah, one of them definitely touched it.
Yeah. All right, so just, that's what we're working, you know, we're working towards a goal of getting EPA to be involved. They already did the cleanup for us, they've accepted responsibility, doing some of the work. Just so you know where the history is, the landlord of that building no longer exists, he's passed away, the family kind of walked away from it completely, so it's kind of an orphaned building. Unfortunately, in the state of New Jersey, an orphaned building, that the brownfield could sit for many, many, many years, you could sit that way. So we're trying to do something without that. The EPA is trying to work with us with that, but that would be next to this building.
And now it's going to try to acquire and purchase that building as well after it just went foot, you know, that's something I was going to look further down the line as well.
You don't want it.
So what we're trying to do again, I would hope that the end result would be, especially with the redevelopment of downtown, that we have a little pocket park there that's opening up, that's our goal. So I would hope that we're not going to keep the building. That would be our --
Okay, so there would be a gap between the movie theater and his building that he's purchasing, planning on purchasing?
Yes.
And there is nothing to worry about on that property?
I can't speak, I haven't those environmental, I don't think there is, but I don't, I can't.
Well, they should have checked, right? That's when they did that.
I have in front of me, so I don't know.
No, we're still doing my own stuff, the phase one, to check to make sure because I won't get the loan if it isn't, nor do I want it because it's just a heavy --
Correct.
Yeah, so I'm still in the process of still under attorney review, so I wanted to make sure this is good, then once I qualify for this, go to my next step and begin with the purchase.
Okay. Members of the board, any questions or comments either way? I mean, this is relatively straightforward.
Questions? If you don't want. So the, is it the current store that used to be fun and games?
Yes. That's the store, that would be the archery one, yes.
Okay, and that's going to be on the street level?
Yes, there is a basement, but the basement isn't really functional for that.
Okay, good, all right.
So now my next question, which I guess this is, I see all the buildings go up to the parking lot, so I would have to get my architect to see if I could expand the building all the way to the lot?
Wait a second. The only thing I was going to throw out is, remember, none of the buildings come with their own parking there.
Correct.
I understand that. So it's a paid system.
And that would have to go before the redevelopment. Once you do that, the process is, if you decide to improve it, to just reuse the building as is, you don't need anything in the way of redevelopment issues. That's really just a zoning use.
My purpose would be to put apartment buildings above it like --
Yeah, once you get to that or extending the building out back, then you need to go to redevelopment agency. They will have a review, they will look at your site plans and whatever you're proposing. Once they've gone through everything and approved it from their perspective, then you would come back here, and then we would have a review on the planning board side.
But there would be no parking in this facility, so it would be parked in the back parking lot?
Well, that's recognized in the applications that there's considered shared parking in the back, so.
But eventually, it's going to fill up the room. It keeps building.
No, we're keeping 100 spots for our public park. It wouldn't be right behind your building, it'd be a little deeper into the parking lot, but there will be always 100 spots at least a little more left of that.
Okay, so then it basically, that's not my plan, it's a good apartment, I don't want to judge it down the line, but I would like to know that they would have a park alert or something I could do there for future --
That, yeah, that you would work out with redevelopment. They've done that with each person that's built something, and they have figured out, you know, what they can and can't accommodate, and that'll affect what you propose to build. Like if you said, "I want to build a maximum out to the property," and I think you can do it, but I'm going to put 20 units there, then that's going to probably go to the redevelopment agency and say, "No, we just can't take that density." If you said, "I'm going to put two or three units," then they figure that in. So if you get to that point, I wouldn't suggest making your purchase contingent on that, but you could certainly say later on, "I want to go to redevelopment," and present them what you want to do.
Understood.
Anything else on that, Mary?
No, it's redevelopment, if you're doing, it also has to be redevelopment.
I called my architect and he looked at it.
Okay, anyone else have any thoughts or questions? Mr. Diaz?
I've just got a comment, just on the principle of the archery shooting practice thing. He said, "Bring their own bows."
Yes, so I'll have rentals for people that are beginners or experienced, for people that have their own bows. It's got to be a certain grain, certain weight, because you can't come with like a crossbow looking thing. It has to be like a real pole one. And then it's all the tips, like even, it would all be like, keep your own tips at home, then you come in and I provide all the tips that are, I guess, blunt tips, so if somebody can't kill or hurt anyone, I think it'll hurt somebody as well.
But the point is, it's an either or. You can turn up there and say, "Hey, I want to spend an hour doing archery and --"
Yeah, so that's how it would do it. I rented out quite a lane per hour, per half hour, you could go up to four people per the lane. Eventually, it becomes busy, then I would run leagues out of it and make it fun for everybody.
I think in principle, the experiential thing, you know, nobody's going to open a toy store because you're buying toys on Amazon or the internet, so I think the experiential thing is the wake-up word for our downtown areas.
Yeah, that's what it is. It's come in an experience, like the hatchet throw. It's basically something. Simulation golf, but now it's for archery.
Chris, do you have anything to add?
I would just say, I don't have, I have not memorized the uses that may be permitted on that lot, so when, if you go and speak to redevelopment, make sure that they clearly understand what you're proposing because it's not a use that necessarily might be included at this point. It's unique. It's not something standard like retail sales and services. So you want to make sure that that's permitted, and if not, speak to them as to how to amend it in order to have that permitted. It may already fit in, but it might not.
This will be the first in all of New Jersey.
Really?
But I don't, I mean, the permitted use wouldn't say like archery, but it might say indoor, it's not exactly indoor, I don't know what it would be called.
Indoor sporting.
You need to make sure that that classification is included in the zone.
Kind of the same as the rage room that's already there?
Yeah, what does that classify as?
And let's remember 15 years ago, ax throw before it was known, it was for the board of redevelopment, and they went, "What are you, crazy? Throw an axes?" And they turned it down, and then they went, you know, opened up a lower place. But they came to us very, for 15 years ago in some of them.
Okay, did you have any other questions? But that's really all we need to do is just get a feeling, and you're not getting any negatives here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. So now, I guess I just talked, but I could proceed, and then once I get the business, I could continue. Okay, perfect, thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, good night. Thank you. Okay, there's no other items on the agenda, but I do want to talk a little bit about the master plan updates. And -- the master plan updates, and one of the things we've seen now with last application that we had, which was the subdivision by the high school, by the Lakeside School, and now this one tonight, and then if you looked at Grand Avenue across the street from this lot, there's another one that's bigger than typical, which somebody could come back in and say, you know, I want to put two lots there, for example. So what I'd like the master plan committee to start looking at is existing zoning, and whether there is now, and we can't do spot zoning, I'm not talking about that, but where there's existing oversized lots compared to the neighborhood, but still within the zone requirements like these are, we should really look at whether or not that zone should continue. Otherwise, every time somebody wants to do something, it's, there's a variance, so, and I'd, and I'd like to get some Collier's opinion on this too. I don't know if you could talk to Deb about it, but we have in the past discussed the fact that some of our zoning is inconsistent with the uses that we have. However, that got there, you know, it could have been a massive number of subdivisions, or it could have been, they put in a zone size that they would like to have, but there's a, but there's a point at which the zone requirements are not realistic, and there's a point at which subdividing within that zone to make smaller lots is impractical, so... Do you guys on the, on the master plan have that kind of in your mind as to what you're gonna include in your reviews?
Well, let me tell you where we've got to so far. We asked ourselves the question, do we need to review the master plan? And after having a look at a couple of, there's, there's a bunch of anomalies where things have been built that are no longer in line with the master plan, or even when it was surveyed, they didn't exist then, they still don't exist now, it's, it's actually incorrect. So I think there is a need to review the master plan, that's the first answer. The second one is, we're not at 10 years yet, we could wait until 10 years, but we can do it before.
Yes, you can.
Is there a, is there willingness and budget to review the master plan? Because that's the next, you know, if we say, yeah, we'll do it, and it's gonna cost $20,000, then what's that compare?
But that becomes a town issue, and I, what I would suggest is, let's say that you guys determine that there's enough stuff to change that warrants a current consideration, and we propose it to the town, I mean, they're the one that has to approve the budget, and ultimately pass the ordinances too, so, but yeah, we can always make the recommendation if you feel that, based on your committee work that you bring back to all of us, that that's the case.
Yeah.
I did tell you from the last review, I was part of the committee that did the last review, we looked at the lot size, and we didn't think at the time that it was a big enough issue to, you know, do a whole study on, because, just because something worked 50 years ago, doesn't mean it works now.
Ah, this is the zoning, because zoning and master plan are diff, very different.
No, no, it was, it was part of the master plan. You know, what Mike is proposing now is saying, you know, now we require 15,000 square feet in an R4, maybe we should, maybe we should only require 10.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's part of the master plan.
No, that's part of the zoning plan. The master plan just has, this is it, it's just yellow, everything in yellow is residential. The zoning plan has 15 different zones with different...
But they're also not all reflected correctly, because people...
They're not, no.
No, they're not.
No. And the zoning plan has been updated, because this one was dated July 13, 2020, I don't know who did that, or why, or...
That was what we did.
Well, you updated the master plan in 2017, is that what you're thinking of?
Mm-hmm. Then it went along, we did the zoning plan as well.
Right, I didn't see the zoning plan.
The master plan is to lay out what's proposed...
Yeah.
...without getting into the details.
Yeah.
And the zoning map is a result of that.
Is the details.
That's the details.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you could look at it as chicken and egg, if you want to, but...
You should probably do both fairly regularly, I think 10 years is a long time.
Yeah, the important thing is to note whether or not we need to change anything.
Yeah.
And whether you recommend it as part of a, I mean, if you look at the master plan, it tells you everything that you're supposed to be doing in town, and it lists the, the uses and the zones in general, but the zoning map, which comes out of the zoning ordinance, which is another responsibility we have...
Yeah. Well, the zoning ordinance is an, is a more detailed exercise, the master plan is fairly straightforward.
Yes, it's, it's more of overall.
Yeah, because if it's residential, we like residential, if it's downtown business, then we like downtown business.
But...
But the zoning plan, the zoning plan and ordinances that go with it, because you can't just change this without changing the ordinances, that's a much more detailed exercise.
Yes, and, and I think at this point, the intent is to look at generally what's going on and see what needs to be updated and when.
Yeah.
And unless you guys don't want to do it as part of the master plan committee, we can always set up another committee that's, deals with the zoning.
Well, we can, there's, there's no reason why we can't, we haven't done so far, we haven't looked at the zoning ordinances and said to ourselves, is that ordinance reasonable or reflective of, of what we want? We can do it.
It's not like we have a lot of developable, developable areas, it's, it's just that we get into this old thinking of what should have been, and then how it was changed by whatever the reasons dor... I mean, I've heard of some people building what they wanted to on lots, and then they needed to create the subdivision, so, you know, it's, it's better that we're ahead of the game. So if you guys want to set up a separate group to review the zoning ordinance, that's okay too, but my intent would be that we somehow bring to the council something that tells them we need to make some changes.
Well, Steve said the zoning's only three years old.
Yeah.
Would I, I can jump in a little bit, I remember, and this might take a look at the language of the master plan, because I know that there was a discussion when the master plan was being examined. Master plan is just done by this board, everybody's not involved in that, that's just the planning board function. I'm looking at, you know, there was about seven or eight separate zones, residential zones, 5,000 square feet, 7,500, and there were some of these that, that required 15,000 square feet, and everybody is 50 by 100, so there was the thought, when doing it, maybe that should be looked at, at consolidating and doing that by work. That, that suggested, I don't know if that suggestion got into the master plan, there was a serious discussion about it, that maybe it should be looked at. If it's looked at, then what was just being discussed would be implementing that recommendation via a change to the zoning ordinance. And I think it's, it's, it would be helpful exercise, look, did we put that in the master plan? I don't remember, it was six years ago, did that, was that recommendation in, maybe look at consolidating the various residential zones? Because that was the idea, exactly what you said, if, and it says 15,000 square feet, but everybody's 5,000 square feet in that, it always requires variance, is that, is that what you want? If, if they're always, if everybody's 5,000, why do you make them come in here, get their variance, and then get their building to be just like everybody else? If you want it, that's fine, but that was the thought, and so I think it'd be helpful exercise to go see if that recommendation did make it into the master plan.
I think the recommendation was to not, if I remember correctly...
You got a better secure memory than I do.
The, the recommendation was to not cut the zones in half, make them 7,500, because, you know, it was changed, it was changed for a reason, you know, just because it was good 50 years ago, like I said, doesn't mean it's good today. Building a, you know, a 2,500 square foot house on 5,000 square feet of property is not a great idea.
Those other houses are 1,500 square feet.
Yeah.
So... Not totally conforming, even though they say it is, because that's just where it is today, they don't build 1,500 square foot houses.
Now, typically, new houses are bigger, but again, you know, we're dealing with what's suitable in Pompton Lakes, and, you know, if you're up in Kendall, then definitely you want to have a, you know, four or five thousand square foot house on a two acre lot, but we don't, we don't do that here, so, again, the intent is not to do anything overnight, the intent is to just start to look at what could be done to improve our master plan slash zoning ordinance slash zoning map to make it a little bit more consistent with reality. So if you feel that you'd like to get someone else to work on that, you just let me know, we'll have another committee to kick in, if you want to do it on yours, that's fine too.
Well, the conclusion, the first conclusion we came to was that the master plan should be updated. We have the 2007 version, the 2017 is just a, it's not a full-scale review.
Reexamine, so reexamine, that's a good, reexamine.
Yeah, but, but you still gotta read both of them together. The, the 2017 wasn't a full-scale review of the first one, you can't take the first one away, you have to keep them both.
Several things.
Yeah, yeah, so we've actually got two, one of which is now 15 years old, so I would recommend that we do a new one, and get rid of the golf course on Dupont and, and all that sort of stuff. But I would also recommend that we ask somebody, and what is that might cost, and how long it might take, and then we can make recommendations for governing body. Yeah?
Well, it's, it's 2023 now, there's four years to have it updated, you don't do a master plan in three months.
Sure.
It also helps spread out the cost, if you stretch it out, so, just mention to Deb that we had this discussion, she'll be able to see us talking, hi Deb, just to get a gist.
Just to add to the conversation, there's a little bit of like, is this a zoning thing or is this a master plan thing? Keep in mind that if you want to amend a zone, a zoning district, it needs to be consistent with your master plan. If the existing master plan or reex does not suggest, to use the example from tonight, if, if there's 15,000 square foot lot, and you're saying that 10,000 would be a more appropriate zone, I'm not saying that, you're saying that, but in a, as an example. You would want your existing master plan or reex to include a suggestion that the lot area in such and such zone be evaluated and potentially reduced. If there's nothing in the existing master plan to suggest that that be contemplated, you really do need to amend the master plan in order to legitimately then amend the zoning. The two, while you're absolutely correct that the zoning is a detailed regulations, and the master plan is this big vision, the two need to agree with each other. So just changing that zone, or some of the major components of that zone, you can't do without thinking about the master plan.
Steve brings up a good point, though, with the, with the master plan, that, you know, the, the Dupont property had a golf course and stuff on it. The Dupont, or part of, the lower part of the Dupont property has also since been rezoned.
Right.
So there is a new zone down at the bottom part of it. So...
Yes.
I think in 17 or 18, it was, it was rezoned.
There was some ideas put in place there, and I don't know if they're gonna follow up on it, it was a storage and, and that's what they're actually shopping the property as, is how that it is right now.
Yeah, if there was highway access to that property, that would be an ace to have, but that won't happen. Okay, anyone else have any comments or to bring before us tonight, any questions? And open the meeting to the public, anything on the agenda or off? Anyone? No, seeing none? Okay, we have no public comment. You know what that means?
Who's your new judge?
Bingo. All in favor?
I don't know.
All right, thank you very much, everyone, for your attendance tonight and for helping.
You're absolutely right on the one, but it should have been, but then they also should not have divided it.
They shouldn't have divided it, but...
They didn't aim them, and they shouldn't have divided.
They had somebody in the other studio.